The call for order this March 23rd, 2021. Hancock County Special Commissioners Meeting. Gentlemen, any adjustments to the agenda? Scott Kane, good morning Sheriff.
Good morning. I just wanted to make you aware that we have to send two deputies out of state next week to Texas on an extradition. They both have had their COVID shot. We checked upstairs and they shouldn't have any, shouldn't have to quarantine. But Steve McFarland and Corey Bagley have applied to Texas to extradite on a warrant.
Now, didn't we, Scott, Scott Atkins, didn't we do something to change the necessity of us approving that?
Yes.
Yep, basically working through department heads and communicating and, yep, which the sheriff's meeting was done.
Done that. Yep, okay. So it takes no official action by us.
Yep, just, just, just an informational thing.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to move to adopt the amended agenda as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing on all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. I'm going to go to public comment. Is there anybody here this morning wishing to make a public comment? Hearing done. Motion in order to approve the minutes of March 9th.
So moved, as presented.
Seconded.
Except they should be titled, as I said, commissioners, not omissioners.
Seconded. Motion made and seconded. Discussion, hearing then all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And I am myself, motion carries. Morning, Tim. You have a report on our audit?
I do. Good morning. It's, uh, it's good to see everyone. I'll, uh, I'll go through the, it's the 123119 audit, actually. We've, we're actually getting ready to start our third, uh, third year with, uh, with the county and first time I've had the opportunity to get in front of the commissioners. So, good to see you all and any questions, jump in. So, I'll, I'll try and be brief. Looking at the 123119 audit, we, we haven't had any issues at all in any of the, any of the engagements we've done, two county audits and, and three UT audits. The one item of note in the county audit is the auditors report does have an adverse opinion with respect to governmental activities. And the reason is for that is there's a two or three-year-old standard called GASP-75. And that changed the way that you had to report your liability for other post-employment benefits, which primarily is health insurance. To present this information in accordance with the standard, you need to, you or your insurance company, Health Insurance, needs to hire an actuary and provide scads of information that, uh, that needs to be presented. It's not really cost-effective to do that. If you are using main municipal health trust as your insurer, they are providing that information, but no other insurance companies are. So a lot of governments have just opted to take the adverse opinion with respect to that portion of your financial statements, rather than incur the cost to present it in accordance with, uh, generally accepted accounting principles. So, that's the reason for the adverse opinion. I don't consider it to be a bad thing because it's, what, it, it's, I don't want to say it's the norm, but it's becoming very commonplace due to the cost. All of your other statements, uh, general fund, your fund balances are all unmodified opinions. So that's, that's what you want to hear in, for your audit report. So, again, the adverse opinion looks bad, but it, it's not, not an awful thing. Looking at the financial statements, the statement of net position is the statement that is carrying the adverse opinion and it's because of that OPEB liability line. Uh, everything else is, is in order. The statements of primary concern, I think, for the government is the page, page seven, your governmental funds, financial statements. At the end of 2019, you had, uh, in the general fund, $3.7 million in, in assets, fund balance of $2.5 million. There was a small deficit in the unrestricted, uh, fund balance. But you had sufficient committed fund balances, reserves, uh, carryforwards to, to offset that. So, so your fund balance was, was positive and strong, but the, there you did see a deficit in the unassigned or unrestricted side. The other two major funds, uh, the airport operations and jail services. The airport is in, in good condition. As you're aware, jail is running an unrestricted fund balance, uh, deficit in the unrestricted fund balance and fund balance overall. And that's typical, uh, you know, as you're all aware, county jails have, have struggled to, to cover costs with the state funding formula. So, not unusual to see a deficit there and, and decreases in fund balance. So, so overall, um, for 2019, you did show a loss or decrease in fund balance of $558,000. Two forty-eight of that was in the general fund. 67 in the airport fund, $100,000 in the jail fund and $141,000 in the, the community betterment fund. If we look at how this compared to budget, uh, you did budget a small decrease or, uh, in fund balance with transfers to reserves. So, you were, your expenditures were, were under budget, but on the revenue side, you were, you were a little short. Oh, I'm sorry. It was the expenditures were over budget due to personnel services and a few other categories. So, any questions so far?
I'm looking at, at, at seven and 17. That's where it sort of, on page 17, it sort of highlights those excess expenditures. Correct?
Yes, that's, uh, that's a summary of your areas where expenditures exceeded appropriations. So.
Is that typical in this time? Do you do other counties or other?
We do. We do other counties. You guys are unique in your, in your health benefits. 2018 was the last year, I believe, that you were under the self-insured, uh, model. 2019, you started the new program. So it is, it is unusual to be that far over budget, but considering the circumstances with the change and, and the wrapping up the self-funding model, I would expect that to turn around in, in 2020, but.
Tim, excuse me, uh, Scott Atkins, didn't we start that in July 1st of 19?
Yeah, so I was just, I was just gonna say.
And we carried through, right through to the end of the year, we carried through expenses prior, even after we started the new thing. So, 2019, 2020 was really going to be the first full year of, uh, the new system. In 2019, for all intents and purposes, we were still self-funded.
We were, and that's where the major part of that deficit comes from. I wouldn't say probably 90%, but yeah.
Okay, cuz.
Or that over expenditure, yeah.
Yeah, that personal service is one really, and the health benefits really, uh, you know, the general fund, it's called health benefits and the jail fund, it's called personals. Well.
Yeah.
Those are two that really jumped out at me, but those are, those are under control going, cuz I, I look at the benefits, I, I just, like, wow. Um, but that's, you feel that's under control and this is an anomaly because of that switch over?
On the health, on the health insurance, yes.
Yeah.
As Tim, as Tim pointed out, um, on the jail side with personnel services, that's simply the budget wasn't sufficient due to funding levels to care of the jail. So, which is, which is also something we've been continually addressing.
Yeah. That, I, I sort of mixed two questions up together here. On the jail services side, you see, Tim, you see that as, as pretty typical on the jail side, under personal services?
But that's not on you as well because as Scott said, I mean, you're, you're budgeting, you know, you're trying to budget, you know, within the constraints of what the state's going to give you. But as you're all aware, um, personnel services is driven by number of prisoners. Overtime costs can, can, you know, devastate a budget quickly. So, not unusual to see a huge, uh, over expenditure in that category.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions on the, the county audit? I, I won't go through all the notes, the put notes and, and so forth. That's just extra information. I will note, we did do a, we were required to do a federal single audit, they call it, for, for 2019 due to, federal expenditures at the airport grants, which exceeded $750,000. You, you were just, uh, just barely over that threshold. Um, so, but it did trigger that audit and there were no, no issues with, with that audit in terms of compliance or anything that received an unmodified report. And your report on internal controls, there were no weaknesses, deficiencies or, or anything they had to report. So.
On page 18, you said that, well, you go, you outline that we really don't have any custodial risk, but then you further say that, uh, the county does not have a deposit policy for custodial credit risk. Is there any reason to have a policy if you don't have the risk?
No, no, probably not.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, you're, uh.
You're not advocating.
I mean, other than, other than having a policy to, you know, firmly state that we will not expose ourselves or, you know, we're only going to bank with institutions that will provide us coverage on our deposits in excess of FDIC or, or something like that.
Okay, but that statement is not a hint that, that, that we're lacking in a policy?
No, not at all. Not, not intending that at all. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
In general terms, to what extent does the auditor in the audit examine the personnel, our financial personnel managing our finances? Reason I'm asking that, it's blatantly obvious this morning that our elected treasurer isn't with us. And quite honestly, hasn't been with us since January 1st.
Yeah.
To what extent is that concerning or, or to what extent do you consider the conduct of our financial staff when you guys do the audit?
Well, we do. We evaluate, um, you know, part of the, part of the audit is evaluating internal controls and processes, um, noting if we see any deficiencies there. You know, we, we look at, uh, what we call SKE, skilled competency equivalent, uh, to, to do the job.
What was that?
SKE is what we refer to, skill competence, competency equivalent, equivalency to, you know, the, the ability of each of these individuals to properly do their jobs, you know, are they, are they well-trained? Are they, are they knowledgeable, uh, adept at their jobs? So, so we evaluate that.
You make an evaluation, so that would be noted if you found an employee that was unskilled, untrained or?
Well, if, if the employee was unskilled, untrained, we would, um, you know, it would affect our assessment of controls of what we're going to test. And I mean, if everybody at the office was unable to conduct their jobs and, and present accurate financial information, then there would be findings in the report, deficiencies, uh, control weaknesses, control deficiencies and, and so forth. Every county seems to be a little bit different in terms of, especially with the treasurer position, it seems. Some, some counties, the treasurer is not that active or involved. I know yours has been in the past. Other counties, it's, uh, an elected position. That doesn't really do a whole lot, to be honest. They, they, they provide some oversight and they, they have the responsibility for the oversight, but at the end of the day, uh, the finance department does most everything that the treasurer might come in and sign checks or, or something like that. But, not to say one, one county is right and one is wrong, but, it's just part of our evaluation, you know, with, if, you know, your treasurer responsibility is to prepare financial statements and, and so forth, then we would evaluate, is he capable of doing that?
Your audit doesn't really go down to the personnel level. It looks at the controls as a, as a organization in place and the, and the end product that's in place, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, more so than looking at, you know, as far as looking at individuals. You know, we want to make sure those individuals are trained and, and are following the process, but we don't ever pick on an individual.
Yeah. So in, in reading this opinion, the answer to the question I'm going to ask would be, yes, I think that, you know, the job is getting done, it's, it's accurate and you, that you have no concerns other than the one you stated. You know, that you have for everybody.
Right.
Okay.
Right, because, I mean, you know, we, we typically have few, if any, adjusting entries. But the audit, uh, looking back at the 2019 audit, there were two adjustments. One was sizable in dollar value. It was $656,000 to adjustment to payables. And that was with one of the airport projects. Um, it was just the timing of, of how the invoices came in. And when we pulled it for testing, it really should have been accrued in the prior year, but it was, it was booked in January of, of 2020. So, so it was just a, just a timing issue, but. You know, typically in our history with, with the county, very few adjustments and, and that's, that's very good. It shows that things are getting done right in the first place, or you do have a process to pick up on the errors and, and correct them before it gets to, gets to us. So.
I think this question that I'm going to ask on 21 has really been answered, but at the bottom of page 21, there's that 639554. That's again, having to do with the, the jail. And, and that's the issue that we discussed prior. Is that correct?
Right. I mean, there, as I noted, there's a small deficit in the general fund. You know, you have several committed balances. So the, the general fund as a whole isn't.
Healthy shape.
Isn't, isn't healthy shape. I mean, you could easily fill the hole, you know. We solved that unrestricted deficit by releasing some of your commitments.
Yeah.
You know, there's, there's a large amount for health benefits. So it was $595,000 committed for health benefits at the end of the year, which, there, there was a need for a large reserve prior to, uh, July 1st of 2019 due to the, the self-funding formula. So, so you know, there's, there's sufficient funds there that you could easily make that deficit go away. It's, it's the jail fund that's responsible for most of that $600,000 deficit. And yes, as, as we discussed, and you're all aware, the, the jail is an issue and it's an ongoing issue with all the counties.
Paul, anything further from you?
No, I, you know, I'm sorry about so many questions. I'm just getting.
No, that's not it. Don't, don't feel bad. That's what we're here for and, and I appreciate the questions because it shows me you're paying attention. So.
John, you all set?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna, I'm going to, uh, you know, take some action. You know, after the UT, we'll deal with them in one fell swoop, if that's all right with you, Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, what, what do you mean, Paul?
Well, uh, you know, cuz this is an audit, it's a formal document. I'm going to be moving to, you know, accept and file on, but I, I was going to do it, one motion to take care of both audits, if that's all right?
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay.
What's the other audit?
UT.
Uh, the UT audit.
Is that on our agenda or are we just doing that combined?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
That was the intent. Yeah, was the.
Yeah, it was, it's one item.
Yep. Okay, I, I just didn't see the UT part of it yet. Is that, is that now? Is that? Okay, Tim.
Yeah, I'll go over that now. Not a lot to go over on the UT. Um, again, like the county audit, things are in good shape with the UT. This report is unmodified. There is an emphasis, a matter of paragraph, just stating to the reader that, these financial statements only cover the unorganized territories and not the, not the actual county audit and just refers them back to the county audit if they're looking for more complete information. The fund balance at the end of the year for you, for the UT was $1.3 million, roughly, $1,296,000. That includes the two TIF funds and the general fund. Uh, the only asset for the general fund was cash, $1.3 million. Of that, $619,000 was due to the TIF, TIF funds. And you had a fund balance of $677,000. $563,000 was committed and $114,000, uh, was unassigned. So that, that had positive fund balances all around. For the year, the net change in fund balance, uh, increased by 124,944. So, uh, positives there in both the general fund and the Hancock TIF. The Blue Hill TIF fund did decrease slightly. Looking at budget to actual, you had budgeted, uh, fund balance use of $20,000. On the general fund side, that actually increased by $55,000. So, uh, positive variance there. The only expenditure account with a negative variance, uh, budget to actual was fire protection. The budget of $35,000, actual was $50,169. And on the revenue side, you budgeted $282,550 and total revenues were $310,000. So, there was a slight variance in other revenue, just miscellaneous. That was budgeted at $1,500 and actual was $394. So, so a small variance there, but, overall, everything was good on the UT side. You know, staying well within budget. So, so no concerns there. We didn't have any deficiencies or, or weaknesses or, or anything to report, uh, on the UT side.
And that, that deficiency that was in the, in the county audit is not reflected here?
No.
Why?
Because it's tied to, it, it's tied to personnel. So the UT essentially has no employees. They're all county employees. So, because it deals with, uh, post-employment benefits and the UT has no employees.
Okay.
They're not.
Yeah.
Tied to, there's no benefits on that side.
Yeah, yeah. All makes sense. I, I just hadn't thought that out.
Yeah, no, that's, that's all right.
Tim, uh, because we managed the UTs for the state and whatnot, is there a copy of this audit sent to them or do they?
State Department of Audit does get a copy, yes.
You do? Okay.
Yep.
Is that after we approve the audit?
It's after it's finalized.
Do they have that already?
They do, yes. Yeah.
And they commented back to you?
No.
Is there a comment period or is it impractical?
No. So we, we send these to the State Department of Audit and there's a, uh, what they call an audit procedure form. Just, it's kind of a summary sheet. Oh, it asks, uh, you know, if there was a management letter, if there are any material weaknesses, significant deficiencies, any issues with management or anything like that. And if we, we send it through email to the department and I don't know what they do with them. They, they are available online. I do know they, if they don't get them, they'll occasionally send emails to the last auditor on record, asking, you know, are you working on this audit? Have they found a new auditor? You know, essentially where is it? But, but no, there's no comment period that I'm aware of. Um, you know, it's, it's just out there for, for public use. You know, if the public wants, wants to download them, as I said, every, if you go to the State Department of Audit website, the county audits, the town or all the municipal audits are, are available there for, I think, five years back. So.
Okay. Paul, any further comment?
No. So I'm going to move to accept and file the audit for the county of Hancock, Maine, for the year ending December 31st, 2019, and the audit for the County of Hancock, Maine, unorganized territory for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, as prepared by Chester M. Kearney Certified Public Accountants.
Seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing done, all in favor, Commissioner Warnebacker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries. Tim, anything further?
How, that's it for now. As I said, everybody, uh, we, we've happy we worked, we worked with everyone there. Um, we've had good luck anytime we've been there. Uh, unfortunately, we didn't get, uh, to spend a lot of time on site last year due to COVID. We did send one staff member in to do testing, but beyond that, we did everything remote. So, crossing our fingers that, that this year we can, uh, get in the building and, and be on site.
That will start soon, only.
I expect it would, but I'll leave that to Scott.
Yeah, I think the last time you and I talked was around the first, second week of April, we were planning on.
That's, that's typically what we shoot for. Last year, of course, was much later because, uh, the first and second week of April, the, the world was topsy-turvy. So.
Right, but I'm ready to go preliminary for preliminary stuff if, um, yeah, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, okay, good. Well.
Just let me know.
We'll start coordinating. So.
Yep.
All right. Tim, thank you very much for joining us this morning.
All right, thank you.
Gentlemen, if, if you're all set with the auditor, we'll move on. So let's go to maintenance and Dennis Walls. Good morning, Dennis.
Good morning.
Okay, the last time, we're, we're talking about the, uh, the front steps, the entryway to the, by the sheriff's office.
Right.
See, last time we talked, we asked that you'd prepare an RFQ for an architect to do some design work on. Apparently since then, though, there has been some discussion that perhaps we have an architect on board who's already done a considerable amount of this work when we did the work on the ICC and maybe an RFQ isn't the, the best next step. What's the deal with that, Dennis?
Yes, well, we do have, uh, Mr. Seelander who designed the ICC job for us and as a component of that, did redesign the entry, uh, as, uh, as you're aware, and we moved in a different direction. I've been in touch with him. He still has those drawings and is willing to talk, but, but left it at, you know, since this process was open, we talked today and then touched base with him based on what the commission, the direction that you guys decided to go in with this.
Okay, I'd like to back the process up one step. As you're aware, we had the, there's been this Christmas gift promise from the federal government for the Rescue Act funds to the county. There's been an indication that they could be used for some capital projects. And I'd like to suggest. I'd like to suggest, considering that this isn't an emergency, that perhaps we don't take, we don't get too far into this until we're certain about how much of those funds could be used for this project. And then, based upon how much could be used, could determine the extent of how far we want to go, because this could be as simple as simply resurfacing the treads, or it could be as complicated as closing in that area and perhaps getting access from the ground floor on handicapped access into the building from that side. So gentlemen, what's your pleasure with regards to perhaps holding off on making a lot of decisions until we know more about our Rescue Act funds?
What do we, what do we think the timeframe is gonna be to really start being able to understand what we're gonna be able to, what we might be able to utilize of those funds?
Scott?
What do you think so?
I think they're still working on it, to be honest with you. I read somewhere that the funds were supposed to be released within 60 days after, it wasn't signature, I want to say enactment, or some other language, you know, formal language like that, I don't know if that allows them. I don't know if that allows them to, you know, wait to, if that means that they, they wait until they get the final rules as to how you can spend it, or what that means.
Do you know, you know what that, you know what that 60 days is, Scott? What would that 60 days be?
Uh, I think they signed it, what, maybe a week ago? I would have to, I would have to look back to the official date. I believe it was signed on a Friday over the weekend, and Monday they came out with the amendment that you can't spend it for direct relief of taxes, so I can get more, more definitive information on that. You know, on that, but it sounds like even the stuff that I read is, is, as of yesterday, was that at least half the money is like, you know, they're waiting to get it out. I think probably the treasury is, you know, still stuck with printing our personal stimulus checks and items like that. Time to do it maybe one day.
So as I understand this item, what, what we did last time was we just had, asked Dennis to prepare us an RFQ that we were gonna take action on. He's done that. As I read this, we should not take action on that till we have the answers to all these questions, so I think that we just move on at this point, right? Because there's no action, we should not take any action at this time, right? Do you agree with that?
You agree, yeah.
That's, that's my suggestion, is that we don't, because we obviously, the action we take would depend upon funds available.
Exactly.
So until we know what we have to work with, I don't think we should be going very far down the planning process. And Dennis, you don't see the urgency on this matter, do you?
Oh, well, it's been an eyesore and a problem, but from a safety standpoint, you can still make your way up and down the steps without falling, so yeah, in need of attention, yes. But if, if it's a matter of sacrificing a greater or wholesale improvement just for the, to be urgent repairing these steps, I think it's short sighted. This, Scott and I both agree that, that, you know, we want to look pretty hard at this project and, and
Well, the fact that the funds might not be available till mid-May doesn't mean that we're not gonna have some direction on how to spend those before that.
Absolutely, right, sure.
I'd like to think that every day that goes by, we do discover more and learn more about how we can use our funds, and
Right.
Problem is that I don't see, I don't see an entity out there who is making the conclusive determination. I see a lot of people interested, a lot of people suggesting. So I, I'd really like to see some governmental entity saying that we have the authority to tell you how you can spend the money and, and so on and so forth. I, I just don't see that yet, right, Scott?
Yeah, I reached out to Carol Woodcock, Senator Collins' office yesterday. She basically, I got the standard reply with the same information that I currently have. I think our best bit at this point is to stay engaged with that, with, with all connections, but especially MCC, NACO, and NACAM. That would be the commissioners, MCC, NACAM is my managers group, and NACO is the National Association of Counties. They, NACO has been really supplying MCC with, with a lot of information. Again, it's all, you know, pretty much standard and very vague, but it still has that asterisk that it'll name a few activities, but as I showed Commissioner Clark, and, and I can, I can send, I'll send a short version of, of what I've been looking at, but at the bottom, there's an asterisk that says, "State and local governments will not be limited to these activities." Okay, but as Commissioner Clark pointed out, I think it would be very, very wise for us to at least have some sort of secondary fallback if this gets approved. Say we were under, you know, we set this up under one set of guidelines, and then turn around later and find out that, oh, well, now we're not gonna count. If we could have somebody else that we, whether it be NACO, Senator Collins, or somebody to fall back and say, well, you know, can you help us here? Yep, so it's, it's still, it's still an unknown. Like I said, I'd rather try to figure out how to spend 10 and a half million than find it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so there's a couple of things we can do here. One is just move on, or I can move to take no action on this item, but that's, that seems like waste, so.
I think my general consensus is I just think that we're going to monitor this on a day-to-day basis. Discuss it again in two weeks. I really think that as things are moving, we'll know more in two weeks than we do today, so.
Perfect.
This is staying on the front burner, it's just we turned the heat down, okay?
Yeah, I got it. John Simmer, we've got, we've got plenty to do in the meanwhile.
All right, sounds good. People in the west that started the roof project over the jail?
Yes, they're out there stripping it right now, getting ready, setting up.
Very good, that's good to hear. While we're talking on, okay, while we're talking on capital projects, I don't see Tim this morning, Sheriff, but he has an issue on jail lighting?
Tim told me that he's got an, an issue going on in the jail, and he was gonna be late to the meeting. And I don't know if the sheriff wants to take those.
Do you want to put that off, or do you want to take that yourself, the agenda items?
What it is, is the exit lighting, when we lose power up there, there's really no emergency lighting, and what we want to do is replace what we have up there, so we have emergency lighting. It's really, it's really a dangerous situation without lights in there, when you have to rely on a flashlight or something along those lines. So that, that's where the three exits are, up the main, the main door and the back, we're looking just to replace them. The wiring is all there, everything there, it's just getting the lights and getting them installed.
Well, this is a situation that's been existed for 30 years, right? 20?
As far as I know, yes.
I mean, it's never, this isn't something new.
This problem is just crossed out.
Oh, Tim's on now.
A recent inspection brought this to light.
Oh, so they've been inspecting this for 20 years and overlooked it, now they're making an issue of it?
That's the same question I raised.
Yeah, you didn't leave an open container of sugar up there, then find, Scott. What's the cost, projected cost of this, Dennis or Scott?
I believe the cost he had was around 2,900, if I'm correct, Dennis.
Yeah, 27, 27.
Yeah, 27.
28.
This, good morning, Tim. And are you bringing this to us because you don't have the funds? Tim, you're muted.
Okay, how's that? Okay, so I'm bringing it up because some recent issues we've had with the control panel going out, and it's over $2,500 request for expenditures.
Excuse me, John, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, so as I understand it, it's not really that, I mean, it got brought up as an issue, but it's not that it's required, right? We really wanted to do it because it's, it's for safety issues for you guys, right?
That, that is correct. That's just something that was brought up, was it gave us an option, and it was something, because the, a local inspector said we needed it, then we verified with the Fire Marshals that we did not. So we're just trying to provide that little safety when the lights will come on, if it goes black in here.
What fund would we take the money out of to, to cover it?
I would, I believe we still have some building funds that we could use.
Well, if we considered this routine electrical maintenance as opposed to a capital project, you would need to go up to bid, Tim. I mean, you could, we, we have, we have repairs up there occasionally that exceed 2,500, but they're just routine repairs, so if you believe this is necessary, I would suggest that you simply treat this as a routine repair issue. Make your corrections, take it from your account, and we won't have to take any action on this. Gentlemen?
Okay.
Well, my feeling is that, you know, I know in my business I'm required to have this, and there are reasons to have it. It, it seems like that's prudent in the jail, especially, you know, the safety of jail staff, so I, I, I support this, this is not, I, you know, I'm looking at the, the estimate now, it's, you know, to have somebody come in and do this work, this is reasonable, it's not a big dollar amount, and if it can be funded out of his, his maintenance account, that, that makes sense, this is a maintenance item.
Isn't Nichols just gonna do the work?
Bishop?
Bishop, I mean.
Ronnie Bishop, yes.
Right, he, he does, he does all our electrical work, and so gentlemen, I'd like to consider this just routine maintenance, it's something the jail wants to do, they have the funds for it, and just give them a blessing and move on, can we?
Yes. Motion, does that affect, or are we?
No, I think general consensus is that we understand, it's, he's advised us that he has a project he's going to
Perfect.
Complete, so. Tim, you're all set then, go ahead, good luck with your project, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Item B, your mental health service in-person meetings.
Yeah, what we, this is just something that's been brought up by staff and by the medical department. Right now, we're doing it through Zoom. And staff and the medical department and mental health would like to be able to have permission to come into the facility for a severe, for a crisis on a, you know, case-to-case basis, so if they feel they need to have face-to-face, we can bring them in. We have medical coming in every week to do the requirement for the medical assessments for the med call. And I just want to advise you that this is something I'd like to do, I'd like to make sure, because of your policy, that it's okay that we bring these people into for this. It'd be one individual, she has been, she, she gave me permission to say this, that she has had her vaccinations, and she'd be the only one coming in representing the company to fulfill the contract needs if, if approved.
Now, you're saying this is for those special situations, it's not a, it's not gonna be a common thing?
Correct, it's for mental health reasons. If we have somebody that's in severe crisis, we'd like to bring them in, so they, they feel that, you know, the body language is a big part, instead of just seeing their, them discuss it by, you know, shoulders up, they see the body language, they can see the demeanor. Body demeanor and such would be a valuable tool for them to make their proper assessment.
But what I'm saying is, is that they're gonna be providing routine mental health assessments and stuff on Zoom, this would only be in, in special situations?
That is correct, yes, that is 100% correct.
I don't consider this any different than ambulance people coming into the facility to get an emergency need or something, and so I don't, I don't see this in contrary to, as contrary to our, our COVID policy. And I think it's well within the, the operational responsibility of the jail, so.
Then you said she, you said she was fully vaccinated?
Yes, and I feel the same, Chairman, but I just wanted to make sure that we was upfront, everybody knew what was going on, so.
Yes, thank you.
That's good.
Great, thank you.
And, and I feel the same way, I feel, I feel that our policy allows this latitude, thank you for letting us know, and good job.
All right.
Very good, then by general consensus, Tim, you have a blessing, thank you for advising us, and no action necessary to take on our behalf, okay?
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Moving on then, item 6A, tax anticipation note.
Yep. Yeah, cash flow is getting down there, I think I'm at 1.3 or a little over 1.3 this morning. So my recommendation is, is requested for you to approve me to start the process for up to 1.75 million. I'm gonna try and look at it and see if I can get it closer to 1.5, but I'd rather, as I've stated before, I'd rather borrow a little bit too much and be prepared, especially if, you know, we only pay what we use.
What was it, what, what did we use last year?
Uh, 2 million, and we did transfer it all because it was, it was the appropriate thing to do.
Yeah. You see the same, you see in the same situation, Scott, with paying the interest and no, it's not, we're not gonna make any money on that this year.
We're not gonna reduce our expenses this time, no.
Are we still going to invest just to recoup some of the cost?
Depends on what we get for rates. That, that's what I mean, I don't know if that's gonna be an option, and if it turns out that it's, you know, like the first half a million, if I give it's cheaper to borrow from the UT, then we'll borrow from the UT, I mean, I'll come and see you about that, but yeah, we'll have to look at options, but I, the way the interest rates are right now, I don't anticipate that, no.
Problem with borrowing the UT is they don't have, they don't have 1.7 available, correct?
Oh, right, we can't do the entire TAM from the UT, no. But I could, if the, if the TAM is more expensive, then, you know, right now, Machias is down to 0.3 times from 1.1, I want to say it was 1.5 last year. Like, down to 0.3, so you see the difference there.
Yeah.
Uh, I can't recall what the TAM was last year. 0.6, I think. So you see right there, if the TAM is 0.6, I'd be, we'd be better off to borrow from the UT and pay the UT the interest at 0.3, but I, a half million, maybe three quarters, I don't wanna, I don't wanna test that too much, but, so that would save us some.
Yeah.
So, again, excuse my greenness, but we, this is all about timing. This is, you know, so we cover because our money doesn't come in till later, this is, this is now, and we don't have fund balances adequate enough to act as a shock absorber, that's the reason for this.
Yeah, so if we had, if we had an increased cash flow, then our, it would show that our fund balance is on the positive side, it would show more cash available.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, the rea, the real reason that we don't have to go for this sooner are the community benefit ones, because those are though, even though they're accounted for separately, the different fund, those are actually in our cash flow. So we could be another three quarters of a million off on cash flow if it wasn't for that. So you'd be looking at a 2.5 million team, but.
Okay, and this is you, you know, where I come from, we never really had to utilize this because of our, our fund balance levels and the reserves. But this, this sounds like it's typical for counties to have to do this because of the timing issue.
It is. Paul is Bar Harbor, are they, were they on, or are they on a calendar or fiscal?
Fiscally.
See, that's why, we went through the full year, we improve our, we improve our cash flow 50%.
Yeah.
That's one, that's, that is one of my goals eventually, is to take a look at that. But you really need your ducks in a row to do that.
Yeah. No, this makes, this makes perfect sense, I understand, so.
I have to sit down with you and then try to understand why, why that, I mean, doesn't that simply change the time of year that we're healthy as opposed to when we're?
No, because you, so your next budget would be an 18-month budget, you'd actually account for those six months, and so you'd be waiting from July to October versus January, October.
Once we got, once we got a, our tax year July to June, at some point during that tax year, we're going to be needing funds, correct?
I, I would say no, no, if you changed it so that you were getting the money six months in advance. If you just change the time without changing your budgetary process, rather than go and you know, you can't go back any further, so you advance it six months. So your next budget would be an 18-month budget, which would essentially breathe out prior, we'd be getting taxes through July or through June of this year, come, come this October. And then that circles back to next year, you've got all that cash flow that much further in advance.
Okay, I don't want to devote time today to something, one I need to discuss and whatnot. Scott?
Yes.
I asked this question because of that proposed Christmas gift here. If they sent, if they sent us a check for 5 million dollars, can we use that as a buffer against our?
You know, I thought about that.
Okay, obviously, it's something we need to look into, because if that could be, if that could be the cash on hand that we need. to avoid a tan, obviously, we're not, let's not do a tan.
Well, my opinion is, if we are, I feel that we should, and I have a motion to do that, but I, I think we should authorize the administrator to move ahead. If that became the case, he just wouldn't draw on it.
Right, I, it's just more of discussion. And the other thing before you make your motion, Paul, is that the cost of maternity to develop the tan documents and whatnot exceeds the twenty-five-hundred, correct, Scott?
Yes.
Do we traditionally go out to bid for that, that attorney, or do we select the same one every time, or?
Basically, Vbody is the only one that I'm aware of, in my experience, and we checked again last year, that basically does this.
Okay, so it's a sole source.
Anybody else, yeah.
Okay, so it's a sole source situation, okay.
Yeah.
Well, John, I think a motion is in order, if you agree, if you have.
Yeah, I agree, I'm all for getting this moving on.
Okay, moved to authorize moving forward with tax anticipation note financing in the amount of up to one-point-seven-five million as requested by the county administrator.
Seconded.
Further discussion? Hearing none?
I'll just, I'll just comment that I, I will do dig further into the, into the, you know, pennies from heaven to see if.
See if that would cover us?
If that's an option.
Yep, yep, that's the thing, is that money, we have no idea what that's good for. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Commissioner Warren Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries.
Scott, when, when we did the borrowing from the UT before, the only expenses, did we have any, is, are there any expenses to that beyond obviously repaying the interest rate to the, to the UT, right? There's no, there's no, we don't have to get a lawyer involved, right?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, so obviously, yeah, well, there's a good chance that we're gonna utilize that to some degree.
The frig is though, John, if I understand you correctly, we're gonna pay the same amount to borrow millions, we are at one-point-seven.
Exactly, pretty close, yeah. I don't think it saves anything at all.
Okay.
Yeah, because we can't borrow the full amount, we're gonna incur the same cost.
Right, we save on interest, yeah.
Yeah, save on interest.
Yeah, save on interest. Moving on then, Scott?
Yep.
We've discussed a rescue act, pennies from heaven, but is there anything further?
Not really, no. Unless you have any other questions, I probably don't really have answers, like.
Oh, we have a lot of questions, yeah, a lot of questions, just no answers.
I will tell you, I have a spreadsheet, if you're interested in it, that has how much the state of Maine, it has all the states, but I pulled out the main information and put it at the top, even right down to what each municipality is receiving. I'll send it to you if you have an interest.
I'll tell you, that is interesting, but I read this morning where we're gonna get one-point-two, no, some, some, some figure for broadband across the state. Angus King outing that.
Yeah, there are other pots of money within this full, like, unemployment and your stimulus and all that, yeah.
I'd like to, I'd like to know what some of these general topic, what some of these general recipients like that, because it may be at some point, we wanna consider some of the same things that are already receiving rescue monies. So anyways, yeah, gentlemen, do you wanna see the spreadsheet on municipals and?
I think I've seen some of the information, I don't, I don't really need it.
Yeah, okay, all right, Scott, then never mind that, let's move on then to COVID-related paid leave provisions. Rebecca, is that you?
Yeah, yep, so just a little background on this. The FFCRA was the legislation that required employers to provide up to eighty hours of paid leave for employees if they met certain criteria that had to do with COVID. And then there was the expanded FMLA that also went with that. We were required to do that through December thirty-first. That ended, and then we were able to voluntarily extend that through March thirty-first, which we did. And so now, under this new legislation, the American Rescue Plan, again, we can extend that if you choose to through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. There are a couple of changes, they're very minor, though. One change is that that eighty hours resets on April first. The other change is the reasons that you could take this leave have now expanded to include vaccinations, leaving for a vaccination or recovering from a vaccination, something like that. So it's up to you whether or not you wanna, you know, provide those same provisions that you've been doing all along.
Just to make sure you understand what Rebecca just, eighty hours she's referring to is the maximum amount that an employee could receive under this. So if an employee had already had eighty hours before this, up until April first, they couldn't get any more time. But everybody's clock resets, that eighty hours resets April first under this, if we agree to provide this. But they would still only get eighty hours between April first and September thirty, so.
Yeah, and just to clarify, that's for those, that's for specific reasons. There are, the expanded FMLA does allow us to compensate them at two-thirds their wage for the time that they're under that, but that's a different, so it's all part of this legislation, but those are two separate kind of scenarios and separate sort of pots of.
So this is an addition, as I understand.
In addition.
And there's, and to all those other things. So the FMLA and what we already have, and.
So, this is, this is just extending the time period that they can use those things.
Yes, but they have other, they have other pools of time, one under the FMLA and one under our personnel policies.
Right, so the FMLA is unpaid time, unless it's under the expanded FMLA.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and yes, they have other, they have their, you know, regular vacation, sick and personal time that the county provides them.
This is, this is essentially used to cover time when somebody has to be quarantined or travel, and then they have to quarantine, or, obviously now with effects of being vaccinated or what have you, so.
Yes, this is very specific to COVID.
Yeah, so we're just gonna, essentially, we're requesting to approve, approve extending it again, and, or not extending it, but approving it like we did previously, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
So you understand, there is no practical additional expense to give this to an employee if that employee does not have to be replaced. So if we have an employee in registered deeds who needs this benefit, they will go out for the required amount of time, they're still continued to be paid from their regular salary account, but it would be designated COVID. But if this was RCC, or if this was the jail, or for the sheriff's department, and they had to be replaced, there is a, you know, there could be a substantial cost to this, especially if you're considering time and a half to replace that individual. So this is, this can be, this could be an expensive benefit to give, depending on what employees need that. Now, having said that, the employees in the RCC, jail, and sheriff's department have their COVID shots, except twenty percent of them, twenty percent have elected not to. So we have reduced the amount of employees who could potentially cost us money by providing this benefit, which means that the balance of our employees and whatnot would not cost us additional, it would simply come from their regular account. So I feel better today knowing that a substantial amount of our required overtime employees are vaccinated and probably wouldn't need this benefit. And so I, I'm more inclined to approve this today than I perhaps what would have been last January.
Well, there's two sides to this, I see that side. The other side is, you know, this is, if somebody goes on vacation, needs a quarantine, they use this, that, that's, that's the part that, that's, you know, that's troubling to me. You know, I'm not saying that's, will be done, or, but this, this is another pot of two weeks that we're giving to, you know, an already very generous benefits package. So I, you know, having said that, on the other side, I understand this, because, you know, if they're exposed, we, you know, we don't want them there, and if they're, you know, if, without this, they may be likely to be there. So there's two sides to this that I'm wrestling with.
One thing I have pointed out, Paul, is that the, if we look at that other document that Rebecca sent about, you know, the provisions for travel guidelines.
Yeah.
So I mean, right now, pretty much most of New England, there isn't a requirement for the employees to quarantine when they get back. And at least as things are moving along right now, the governor's plan is that by May first, essentially, people could travel wherever, and they're not gonna be required to quarantine unless a state or something is considered a hotspot. So, I mean, I understand your point, like, yeah, sure, I mean, anybody can abuse any system, you know what I mean? But I think, like you were saying, like, I think the benefits outweigh any of the concerns that people are gonna abuse the system. Quite frankly, people in the county are gonna know whether an employee is abusing it, and if they wanna look like somebody is abusing the system. Yeah, I guess that's on them, but I, I think the, I think the risk to the county are higher, that you should, we should approve it just for the sake of trying to keep everybody safe, and it's something that can be used if it's, if it's needed.
Rebecca, so we understand this, if an employee incidentally became, found themselves in a situation where they need to quarantine, as opposed to an employee who, who conducted a high-risk activity and conducted the same, the, we're still going to be bound with the same benefits, right? I mean, we're gonna have to provide them compensation, no matter what the, what the risk was, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, we, at this point, we really don't try to break down their, you know, their behavior, their choices that put them in the circumstance that they landed in, yeah, we're, we're bound. I mean, that being said, I haven't experienced a lot of employees who have abused this.
And, you know, to John's point, we, something to make soften this, because there could potentially be a big cost to this, but it hasn't been, right? Today, we, we've had this policy essentially, you know, have you seen big costs occur?
We, we have had this policy in place since April first of last year, and we've had a lot of employees use it. And I can tell you what the number in wages that have, that this has translated to, but that's, it's not really gonna be an accurate number, because when someone's, it's not gonna tell you, like, overtime costs and that kind of stuff. So between, between employees who have used this emergency paid leave and employees who have been compensated through the expanded FMLA, the wages have been about forty-two thousand dollars.
Which, A, I'm trying to get reimbursed, except, you know, this, the prior here is grant that, I mean, I wish this was much similar to the airport one, because this is like literally pulling teeth. I think I'm gonna end up basically asking, can you just push it through for me? I mean, come on. But also I want to point out, Commissioner, is that, you know, the opportunity to abuse this was much, much higher, you know, last year than it is now. And the opportunity, as, as you've discussed and pointed out, you know, people are gonna be vaccinated, hopefully, you know, our restrictions are becoming less and less, so the opportunity to use this, I think, is less. And I, for me, it's a prudent thing to do, but I fully understand the access of the benefits, trust me.
No, I guess I'm not in opposition, I just wanted to point out that, you know, this is just another example of, you know, folks are working for the county, or, you know, they're very well-treated.
Yes, they are.
And it's, this does not exist in, 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 you know, the private sector, it can't exist, we can't afford it.
And the irony of that is the private sector is the one that's supposed to be reimbursed for these funds. We're, we don't get reimbursed for them, so it, you know, it's supposed to be an incentive for the private sector to, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, if, if this was a private entity, you know, we, we could, you know, there's tax credits that could be utilized, and, and, you know, anyways, I'm belaboring this, so. I'm gonna move to extend the paid leave provisions under the, for Families First Coronavirus Response Act, including expanded reasons under the American Rescue Plan through September thirtieth, as requested.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, Commissioner Warren Becker?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself, motion carries.
Thank you.
So just to follow up on that, I just, I know you referenced, Commissioner Warren Becker, the email that I sent to you about the travel restrictions. There have been some questions from employees about what travel they can engage in and that sort of thing. And all along, we've been following the main CBC guidelines, and I just wanna clarify with you if that's what your expectation continues to be.
Mine is.
Yes, and, you know, like, if you look at that memo, going on vacation to Florida is not something, you know, Florida's not in that list.
Right, but if you have been fully vaccinated under these guidelines, if you've been fully vaccinated, or if you've had COVID-nineteen in the past ninety days, you can travel anywhere in the United States and not have to quarantine when you come home.
Okay, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so we'd like to update the memo and send it out to you for approval before we release it, but we'd kind of like to update the memo with any new information. And, you know, maybe, I'm gonna use the word soften it up a little bit from, as I reread that, boys, a month ago, we were, we were facing, you know, some, appeared to be some dire straits with, you know, some of the things we had to do. So we'll get the improvement over the last, you know, thirty, forty days.
Okay, so let's move on to the wellness plan, Rebecca?
Yeah, okay, so the last meeting when we talked about this plan, I left you with some information, and I sent you a memo over the weekend to review. Basically, in order for us to move forward, we know we wanna move forward with ultra benefits as our vendor, we need to determine whether you wanna do three or four benchmarks, and whether you want all employees, all full-time employees to be able to participate, or just the ones enrolled in the health insurance plan.
I have a question on that. In your memo, you sort of laid out an either-or thing, but is, can't you do both? Like, have non-essential, excuse me, I'm getting my title mixed up here. Full-time employees who participate, you could have them adhere to all four, and that while those not enrolled, one, two, and four, is that feasible?
Um, that's a good question, I'm not sure. If we, if we treat different employee, if we treat employees differently, we might be on unsteady ground.
Well, that's, that's, that's my worry, but for those who are enrolled, if, okay, so that's one scenario, or treating them differently. But if we treat those who participate differently than those that don't, do we, are we, do we have the same exposure?
Um, that's a good question, I, I don't think so, so, and I'd have to really kind of think about that to let you, to really, you know, analyze the level of exposure both ways.
And here's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah.
Because those that do participate have that benefit. have that benefit and have no out-of-pocket expense. So it's not, it's, you know, therefore, they should be utilizing it because, you know, what's our goal of, our goal of the wellness program is not to give people an extra 300 bucks. It's to have them well.
Right.
So, so I understand the reason there. Now, the reason for not, you know, those not enrolled is because they would have extra out-of-pocket expense. And therefore, we might be pushing them into our plan, which is probably more expensive. You know, I don't, you know, more expensive for the county.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, that's why I'm asking that question, you know, and quite frankly, that's one of the problems I have with this, you know, I know, however, we had an opt-out incentive, you know, if folks recovered, there was, you could opt out. We have something similar. But, or I think we have something similar. That's one of my problems here. And that's one of the questions I have. You know, if it's a benefit and we do this, I think we should be requiring all four. If, if, if we're not, I, I still think they should be doing all four, but, you know, they're less likely to participate because they're going to eat up that $300, you know, complying with number three. Oh, it's not a benefit. So that's one of the quandaries I'm in.
Well, so just a couple of thoughts that, that come to mind immediately. One is, since we're sort of getting it off the ground and, and rolling, keeping it simple is one of the, the best ways to, to get, you know, participation. The other thing is, I mean, I could, I could run that scenario by our benefits advisor and see, I'm uncomfortable with having two different standards. And I'm, I'm not able to articulate why right now. So I guess that Scott, what do you think about that?
No, I'm struggling with the difference too with having, I think, just simply because of, you know, trying to keep everything simple and keep everything fair. So I, I agree with running it one way or the other and see what happens, with or without it for everybody and see what happens.
No, I'm not advocating it that way. I, I'm just, those are just things that come to mind.
Yep.
I am an advocate of treating everybody the same.
Right.
So, you know, but I'm also an advocate of if we're going to have this,
Right.
you know, we want them healthy. So I, I think what you're hinting at Rebecca or, or is that, you know, we, we, well, here's what I'm hinting and reading into is that, you know, we apply it to awful time employees with one, two, and four. And then we see how it goes. I think that's what you're advocating.
It, it is. Yeah, I think that would make it, I, I, well, my goal, I, I think, probably, I'm assuming your goal is to encourage participation. And so I think that would be, you know, the best way to get as much participation as we can. And then, you know, as we, next year, we can tighten it up a little bit more and, and, you know, add benchmarks to it or change them or, you know, as we get, as we get more employees on board, you know, we can make it, we can tweak it as we go forward.
Okay, so I've heard several times cleaner, easier, whatever the words are or whatnot. And I don't see how including four makes this clean. Because if you only had one, two, and three to qualify for your annual $300, that would be very objective. In other words, you, you show proof of, of getting your assessment done, visiting your primary care provider and your dentist, bingo, there's your check. But with four, it's an ongoing activity. So at what point do you, through an ongoing activity, do you meet the threshold for getting the $400? So I really would like to see, my perspective is that we include three and we encourage four, but it's not part of the requirement to receive your, your stipend for participation. I think, I think we should be encouraging our employees to see their dentist. And if you're going to, you're going to give them a $300 and your dentist appointment is a hundred bucks, they're still 200 to the good, even if they had to pay that out of their pocket.
How, Rebecca, I think you've, I, I just don't remember what the figure. Is, are those not enrolled? Is that a significant number?
Um, let's see. So, yeah, I did these numbers yesterday. We have about 96 full-time employees right now, and I think 78 of them are enrolled in the health plan, something like that.
Are you counting the ones that receive a, has enrolled or, or, and receive a buyout?
Right.
If those are counted, 78 is enrolled.
Right, 78 are enrolled in the health plan. The others receive the health, health, health insurance elsewhere.
Are all those 78 to buyouts included in the 78, Rebecca?
No.
No.
In, in the remaining, what is it, 11 or something like that?
Yeah. So I would say most of them, if not all of them, receive a buyout. That is very limited.
Well, they're either enrolled in the plan or they get a buyout.
Right, or they get, they get some sort of buyout. So they're getting, they're getting a monetary effect. So again, you know, discussing that, three, I, I agree, three, three, I was very intrigued to see that in there. I mean, I've always grown up knowing, they know if your teeth are healthy, you should be healthy. I'm going to quickly counter Commissioner Clark with number four. For me, we changed that up. That's just a simple statement that says, you know, I exercise or will exercise, you know, two to three times a week and list off a few exercises. They sign it, bonus done. There's no recording of physical activity, nothing like that. It just, it both, it does what you said, is it enhances the, to remind them to be physically active, but it also, you know, it's just another simple step. It's on the honor system. That's all that was.
That was my comment. Rebecca, what would you suggest the county required from the employee that they complied with four?
Well, it would be, we can tailor that to however you want to make it happen. They can, they can enroll in a, in Weight Watchers, in a yoga class, in a dance class, something like that. So they can actually turn in a receipt for some kind of program that they've put themselves in. Or they can simply, like Scott said, fill out an affidavit saying, I exercised three times a week. We can make it as simple or as hard as you want to, or as difficult as you want. Now, just keep in mind that one of the incentives last time was the non-smoking affidavit, which was simply employees signing a piece of paper saying, I don't smoke and turning it in. And that was one of their benchmarks. And I actually had a few employees say, I'm just, I guess I'm not going to get the bench, I'm not going to get the incentive because I smoke and I'm not willing to give that up. And so they, I mean, they were pretty honest about it. A lot of them were honest about it. So I expect that they will be honest about this too. So we can do it either way.
Okay, here's, here's something I hadn't thought of that, that Scott just brought up is that the buyout, the buyout is based on our, our plans, some, probably some portion of our plan. So presumably, they're being, they're being bought out at a rate that includes that. You know, so I am now much more comfortable with all four benchmarks. You know, is, is that a true statement?
Well, when you say, what, what happens is, is that for every buyout, Paul, I mean, it's a practical matter, whatnot, they're saving the county money because instead of paying the full cost of their health it's getting it somewhere else. And we're giving them a portion of that as a reward for not charging us the full amount. So hang on, I gotta, I gotta make sure my warranty's up today here.
Check on mine too while you're at it, will you?
So I'm not quite sure what your question was, but if you understand the process, I mean, we shouldn't penalizing people, we shouldn't be penalizing people with this program who take the buyout because for everybody that takes a buyout saves this county money. And, you know, I
I agree. That, that was my quandary before. But presumably, that buyout amount is based on, you know, in some form, in the formula is, is the, is the program that we offer. So, excuse me, the benefit that we offer. So I, I, I am, I am comfortable now. I really don't feel that we're cheating or treating the folks that we provide the, who, who take advantage of the benefit. I don't think we're treating anybody any differently if we adhere to all four benchmarks.
Right.
Do you Rebecca? I mean, you wrote the memo, so.
Yeah, well, I, I just, I just feel like I, I need to point out that in, in my meetings with Lisa from Ultra Benefits and Connor, who's our benefits advisor from Acadia Benefits, they both agreed that they wouldn't use the dental as a benchmark if all full-time employees are, are, are participating, simply to keep it consistent across the board. Now, whether that, I think it's more, I think it's more a point of consistency and, you know, ease of administering it than it has to do with putting us in a position of liability. So
If I understand what Connor, Connor, them saying is that let's put, put together a program that everybody's doing anyway, so that they all qualify as opposed to just making them improve their health.
No, 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 they, I mean, they're not, they're, the most important, the most critical piece of this is the, is your primary care. So you get to your doctor, that's important. A lot of employees aren't doing that now. The other piece that people aren't going online and taking a wellness assessment. So, I mean, I, the dental isn't the only piece that they're not doing. They're not doing, a lot of them are doing any of these things. So that's the only difference with the dental benchmark is that it is, some have access to it, some don't. That's, that's the only difference. Or it's more expensive for some to access it, I guess I should say.
So there's an out-of-pocket cost.
Right.
What the concern is. However, maybe what they don't realize is, or even the level of the buyout, which is what, like 30% of, 30% of whatever policy they would qualify that they're not taking from the county. I mean, that's substantial. And then you figure in, well, not only they get in that, but they're also not paying the weekly deduction that, you know, those that have the health insurance have to pay. So I'm inclined to try. If you want my, I say try all four. If dental turns out to be a real bugaboo, next time, maybe we remove it.
I'm not sure that it really will turn out to be a pain. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly willing to try all four if that's what you want. I don't think it will be that big of an issue.
I don't know.
How would we know that dental was, was prohibiting more people from being involved in the process?
Just whatever they communicate to me. You know, sometimes I'll hear things out and about and yeah, they're not shy about complaining about that, trust me.
Well, I, I'd like to have all four.
Okay, I'm going to move to approve the wellness program as presented. Allowing all full-time employees to participate must adhere to all four benchmarks. And the incentive amount shall be $300 annually, as recommended.
Seconded.
And, you know, again, I expressed my apprehension before. Again, I'm torn between costs and, and, you know, treating employees that we, but I see a benefit to this. I really do. And, you know, when we have to revisit it, we will, is my, is my guess.
John, you signed that. Are you, are you in favor?
Yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of the four. I mean, I'll be honest, it would be a red flag that nobody would go along with, but it'd be really nice if part of the $300 was that you were vaccinated, but to me, the fact that 20%, my eyes can't roll harder, but that's my personal opinions on it, but.
We can't see it through your glasses, so.
God.
But John, you have a similar program at work, right?
Oh, yeah.
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 You're familiar with that program?
Yeah, I don't get a bonus like this, but essentially, it's a small credit back towards my weekly healthcare payment.
And do you know what the percentage of employees participate in that at your work, please?
I don't really, yeah. I mean, most people are going to do it because the healthcare is so expensive. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion on the floor made. And seconded, any further discussion? The only other thing is, you're going to develop some kind of a process to comply with four, correct, Rebecca?
Yeah, yeah, I'll work with Lisa and, yeah, she'll tailor the program to exactly what, what you're talking about right now. And I'll bring that, you know, I don't have to take up a lot of your time, but I can, I can, you know, update you with what that looks like.
I'd like to see that because I'd like to see that more in, you just tell us you're going to exercise and, and don't cheat as opposed to having to join the Y or join a fitness club or, you know, okay. Gentlemen, anything further? If not, all those in favor, Commissioner Warbacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. Very good. Anything else with regards to that, Rebecca?
No, no, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, we have three executive sessions that we need to conduct this morning with regards to issues. The first one has to do with taking any, taking, whether or not we want to take action on a legal, a legal advice by our attorney.
Okay, so before I move to do that, we have, we're going to have an attorney. We're going to be receiving advice from an attorney here?
We already have. We have, that's just way back when he gave us those three options for collecting the funds.
Okay, so.
Remember those?
Yes, I do.
You have those in front of you?
That's, that's the advice that we're going, that we're going to act on this morning on, on whether or not we want to follow through on any of those or take no action.
Well, we're going to be discussing them. We're going to be discussing the, the legal advice. We can't take any action in the executive session. So I just want to be clear. So I'm going to move to go into executive session as permitted by one RSA 4056E to consult with legal counsel regarding Silver Airways and past due amounts, past due payments.
Seconded. All of us in favor, Commissioner Warbacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
And myself. Okay, Bob Conry, I see you're on, and Andy, you're on. Anything before we go into executive session? We'll probably be coming back with no further action today.
Please, I, I believe I'm a little further on the agenda. Rebecca, if you would advise me when you come back, I'd appreciate it, please.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. There's two evaluations later.
Oh, that's, oh, that's
I have another meeting here in a minute, but I will monitor and come back.
Okay, right.
Thank you so much.
So, okay, very good.
So we in executive session?
Okay, then we're coming out of executive session.
Okay.
We back on record? Paul, do you have a comment?
Only that I have another motion.
With regards to the executive session we just had?
No.
No.
We need to have
I just want to report that we took no action, we were taking no action with regards to the advice the attorney gave us. And we just direct the airport manager to continue to remind Silver Airways that they owe us this bill. Okay? You have the floor, Paul.
Okay, so at this point, we're going to be conducting two evaluations that I, okay, so I'm going to move to go into executive session as permitted by one MRS A 4056A for the discussion of personnel evaluation.
Seconded.
And that's plural.
You're, you're going to move from one executive session right into the other?
Well, it's one executive session to deal with the, the two.
Right. Okay, is that your second to that?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, Commissioner Warbacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. We're going to go into executive session now to discuss I am myself. We're going to go into executive session now to discuss an employee evaluation of our I C C director. And, uh, other than we are very satisfied and, and very appreciative of the work they're doing. So gentlemen, that concludes our agenda. Our next meeting is set for eight thirty on, uh, April sixth. Rebecca, I don't know if you use a form document, but your today's agenda.
Spent twenty-twenty on it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that. Sorry.
Bill, before we, before we go, I've got a couple of items. Like, it takes like two more minutes of your time. What is the, um, I just want to make you aware, follow up on my email this morning that we had a, uh, an exposure through the courts this morning. Everything's under control. Um, I did end up sending one staff person here in the office home as a result of questionable exposure or not. We'll deal with that later today and see how much further it may be. Item two is, I'm going to send you, uh, some information from, uh, remember Aaron Doherty from the Frenchman State Conservancy, uh, he's called me up again, wanting to come before you, asking for an easement for the trail down back here by the river. They're doing, I think you've seen in the paper, they're doing some trail work and whatnot. And, um, finally, I've got, I haven't got the official word back yet from the state of Maine, but apparently good old Bull Hill Wind Farm has gotten another abatement. To the tune of, we have to pay back a portion of what we received, and the total payment was fifty, just shy of fifty-eight thousand dollars. So I've let Miller know, and Miller put his two cents in, but essentially this was done. It's been done. I expressed a displeasure that it doesn't help in the relations between the state and the counties with regards to TIF, and so, um, this why not represents the state is, is willing to come before you. So I'll have more information on that later, but just wanted to give that out.
Oh, well, let me understand that, that they've asked and received a, an abatement. And, and you, you have to state reasons, right? In the abatement?
The, the reason behind this one wasn't necessarily asked. They were, they inquired with the state. They were, uh, they were forgotten. And the state did an overall abatement, and especially on equipment. Again, this why not can probably explain this a little better than I, uh, but it goes back to two thousand, let's say, two thousand and nine, any equipment prior to that. They, they just barely fell, like, within a year within that guideline. So it's sort of an offset of something that was already done. And, you know, again, I said, well, you call me up to tell me, you know, it would have been nicer if we had better communication than an advance notice rather than just calling me up to tell me that I need to repay you back part of fifty-eight thousand dollars. And especially when she doesn't know what the number is and, yeah, yeah, it's, it's unfortunate, Paul, but this is the history of how the state and the counties interact when it comes to TIFs.
Well, through, through abatements, you know, we're in a grave party here. And they, they didn't reach out. I'm not sure that that's a.
Well, I think that what they're saying is, yeah, and I understand your concern. It's part of a revale that was done. And their equipment or a portion of their equipment or whatnot, again, um, and I think this, this why not should come on and have a conversation. Part of the other history, a short version of it is, is that they've been receiving, um, abatements basically without very little, if any, representation, uh, participation from the counties, which has been a problem in other counties. And it's even gone so far as to, um, you know, pull a request for this information by lawyers um, have been, um, have been denied successfully.
So.
Yeah, it's, it's not right, but.
Did we actually make a formal FOIA request?
We ventured this way at one point, but instead of, uh, we were following Somerset had done a, a very similar inquisition that, um, that we were looking to do. And, uh, again, this is with a prior board. I don't know, Bill, you were on during that time?
That, just come on.
Yeah, we were going to ask, but Somerset spent thousands of dollars with a lawyer and basically got, and then I think, we think we had a quick review with our lawyer who basically said the same thing, that this is, this could really turn into a battle, and it would be better if the counties could get together and combat it collectively, but not every county has a, has a TIF, a wind farm TIF.
Yes, so, because, you know, what, what's happening is they're, they're, you know, they want to incentivize, you know, these, you know, I don't know what to call them, but these utilities and, and using us to, to, using the counties in plural to, to be that subsidy.
Right. Right, and Miller will tell you, if you review the TIFs, there's a TIF budget that's, I want to say, I can't remember if each one is seven million or if they combined, they're seven million. But in all actuality, as you look at that, you have to be careful because we're only going to get like forty-two, forty-three percent of that as it stands at this point. And now that's reduced even more with this figure here, but because of the, the, the valuation adjustments they've ever seen over the years.
So, so how this works is they're funded through TIF, and then they're baited, so that TIF is never realized. Is that, i- i- is my thinking correct here?
What they, what they're doing is they're reducing both their valuation, um,
Which, and.
So essentially, they're saving on that thirty percent that the county gets to keep off of that. And if you're talking to millions of dollars in valuation over time, it, it all adds up. Yeah, yeah, because the state wasn't involved in this process. It kind of flows, the money has to go to the state, and the state has to turn around and send it back out. The state doesn't get anything out of it. But it's been kind of a unusual circumstance, and I think maybe you're, another reason to have this why not on is to maybe revisit some of this and ask some of these questions, and then this board take a look at it, and maybe we, maybe we seek legal counsel there.
Well, and, and maybe we talk to our delegation.
You know.
Or save delegation, because that's what, you know, that's who's ultimately responsible.
Right.
Crazy.
Yep.
Scott, uh, considering your additional comments this morning and looking at how dull, uh, agenda's been all morning, you really need to consider putting these on our agenda so that, uh, the public is aware that we're going to be discussing these. I mean, Jennifer left us quite some time ago. I don't know if she comes back, if she ever looks at the minutes or not, but I can see that she might find this one newsworthy than anything else we've done all day, so, considering, you know, that, uh, the impact of your, you know, your final comments of the day when you're setting your agenda, okay?
Yeah, I mean, these are always under consideration. Again, this is just information. These should come up again in a future agenda. I'm not, I'm not looking at have this as a clearinghouse at the end, but I think you, rather than send you all an individual email that, you know, the time seems elongated. I figured, you know, a short, quick snippet of this one would serve, but I understand what you're saying.
No, I, 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 to be honest, I kind of like this because, uh, you, you know, I'm always used to, you know, comments, you know, managers' comments and counselors or commissioners' comments at, at the end of an agenda. What that does is help, help, uh, frame a future agenda item, which this certainly should be. And, and the news would be better covered, you know, would be more open, transparent, and, and complete, you know, if it were an agenda item, you know, come from this. Not that this should have been at this point, because i- i- in my opinion, it's just not ready yet.
Okay. Anything else today, gentlemen?
I'm going to move to adjourn.
Yep. I'll second that.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All those in favor, Commissioner Wambacher?
Yes.
Commissioner Parity?
Yes.
I am myself. We'll see you on April sixth. Good day, gentlemen.
You.